All right. Thank you for joining us this evening for the October 25th, 2022, Montessorino Special Better Streets Commission Meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist commissioners, staff and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Commissioners, your microphone is live, so please keep your microphones on mute until you wish to speak. For tonight's meeting, we are using Zoom to host the Better Streets Commission Special Meeting. At the bottom of the Zoom client, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a commissioner speaking. Please raise, use raise hand and to be recognized by the chair and enabled to speak to the commissioners. To comment on to oral communications or on any agenda item, you are allowed three minutes to speak per agenda item. Emails are limited to 350 words can all be submitted to the city engineer and it will be read into the records. This word limit is set to hear the typical three minutes time allowance. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, because we are not all in the same room, all votes at this meeting will be taken by roll call. Would you like me to proceed with the rule call, Chair?
Yes, thank you, Clerk Gonzalez Langarica, and I also wanted to mention to the team tonight. The commission, this is Steve Leonardo, City Manager. I am filling in for interim City Manager, Mr. Don Wimberly. He has come down with something, a little bug, so hopefully he will recover soon and we will have him back shortly. But we look forward to all of our participation tonight. I have the agenda in front of me. I will be available to answer questions as best I can should I need to answer questions. But I think this is our second go around with this plan and we're just bringing it under further review and counting on the commission and the consultant tonight to do all the heavy lifting. So, thank you, everyone.
And I was muted earlier, Loisey, so please go ahead.
No worries. All right. So let me go ahead and start then Commissioner Nelson.
Here.
Come in Chair Chaffin.
Here.
And then Commissioner Lap. I'm so sorry, I'm gonna butcher this again. I just wanted to properly address you by your last name, so, but yes, Commissioner Bob.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay, orders of the day, I think would be any changes to the agenda. Doesn't seem likely. Does anybody have any?
No.
All right. Do we have any written communications, Loisey?
No written communications as far as I know.
Okay, and is there any members of the public waiting to speak?
Don't believe we have anybody.
Okay, so no oral communication. So that will get on to the reason why here unfinished business, the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. I thought about how to tackle this in advance. My proposal for tackling it would be first, a little conversation about the timing on getting it done. And then talk about what outcome we want. And then the process to get there. And then finally, the specifics. Does that seem reasonable?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I think that works.
Okay, so I mean, we scheduled this meeting in a panic because we, for some reason, where we thought we were, we needed to get it done by the end of the year or get it, excuse me, to the council to approve by the end of the year. But in digging into that a little bit with Don, I don't, I think that was just our own internal goal. And given that Jessica has left and we didn't get the product we expected, or we expected to have another meeting with the consultants. I mean, that's what they, I listened to the August meeting and that's what they told everybody else. So we're kind of, this is kind of dumped in our lap that to most of us seems a little bit unfinished. I think we should take the time to do it right and not try to rush this out and get it done this month or next month. That's my opinion.
Barry, do you have an understanding of what the goal is in terms of what we as a commission need to do to provide guidance or whatever to the town council?
My gut feeling is, is we should, this come up, we should come up with a bicycle and pedestrian master plan. I think we should do it on our own and then send it on to the council with a recommendation for approval. Steve, does that seem reasonable to you?
Yes, that is correct, Chair Chaffin, and you know, I just wanted to mention that everything so far that you mentioned is correct. There is, you know, it would be nice to have this done by the end of the year, but I don't think that was a hard and fast call. The feedback, if any, that you will be providing tonight, whatever recommendations you will make in addition to what the consultant has brought forward already, all could be forwarded to the town council in its own report and presented to them. And they will make the final decision based on whatever recommendations you put forth. So it's in your hands, in the commission's hands tonight.
All right, but just to maybe set what I'm thinking, Steve is, I don't think we're going to be able to finish this tonight. I mean, we've got an open issue, for example, of whether it's going to get cleaned up by Montessorino or cleaned up by the consultants. And we need to go back, probably need to go back to the city and ask for more money if the consultants clean it up. So just expectations is, if we do a good job, I don't think we can finish it tonight.
Certainly. I would say, as you mentioned earlier, it's better to get it done right than just to get it done.
Okay, I just wanted to talk about that because it was a big concern and that's why we scheduled a special meeting. That we needed to do something right away, but I, if everybody agrees, let's take a couple of months and do it right. And well, one thing we need to do is figure out whether we edit the document ourselves or hire the consultant to do it. And you know, Don can't even work on that for at least another week. Any more comments on the timing?
Well, I just, I just wanted to understand what our timing was because I was under the impression that there was, you know, that something had to be done sooner for some reason, which I, you know, I don't know. That's what I was hoping to understand, but I definitely agree, we should do it the right way and do it correct and thoroughly as opposed to just, you know, rushing through something.
So that, so Don first looked at the, our timeline that we set up before the start of this project. And it did say we would be done by the end of the year. But, you know, we've had a couple of big hiccups with Jessica and not getting out of the consultants what we expected to get. So I think we need to change our, our internal, you know, the, our committees timeline.
So to understand, that was, that was our commission's kind of arbitrary date to hopefully have as a goal. It, there's not a hard deadline that we have to have this done because of some grant money or whatever that we're going to apply to. It was, it was our own, you know, self-imposed deadline. Is that correct?
That is my understanding.
Okay, okay. Well, that, that, that kind of clears up a lot in my mind.
Okay. So the next thing to talk about is outcome. What do we want to have? Now, I'll throw out a couple of thoughts is what, what is missing in my mind is a section on the bicycle and pedestrian network. You know, the routes that we feel people are gonna typically take for bicycling and pedestrian. I think we, for bicycling and walking, I, I think we have all the information to determine that. And it's quite close to these maps that they provided, but doesn't necessarily match.
I, I agree. I, I think some of the maps point out deficiencies or where there could be connections or some sort of usable pedestrian or bicycle, you know, meet mode. But I don't necessarily think that, you know, all the projects that they have listed necessarily align with what we might think is best for Montessorino.
Correct. Yeah, is, Loisey, is it easy for me to show a document? Do you happen to know?
What I can do is I'll go ahead and stop sharing and what you can do is share your screen and whatever it is that you want to share with the rest.
Okay.
Let me know if you have any trouble. Okay?
Okay.
Barry, might you be able to pull up a couple of the maps? Because there was one that said like the existing pedestrian and existing bicycle.
Yeah, yeah. I guess what I, what I have up right now is the original Los Gatos one, which we were part of. So show, share a screen. I see a button.
Okay, and I've got those if we need to share those as well.
Are you seeing anything?
Yes.
So this is what I imagined. This was, and I, let me see if I can figure out how to zoom out. So this, this was the original Los Gatos and Montessorino Bike and Pedestrian Plan map. And it shows connections, it shows nearby cities.
And that was from the Los Gatos Plan, was it?
Gatos Plan, but we helped fund that.
Right.
And so this is the sort of thing I'm imagining we should have. Some, something along these lines. Any thoughts on that?
I mean, yes, it would be great. I don't know if we need to be as expansive as this because we, as Montessorino only border Saratoga and Los Gatos real estate.
Yeah, I agree. It might be quite, quite so big, but it should probably just show where it connects to the neighborhoods.
Yeah.
I agree.
And existing trails, yeah.
Yeah, like for example, on our, the one we have now, it shows Bicknell coming in. And that, and it looks like a little stub, but once you look at this map, you can see why Bicknell is important.
Yes.
Okay, so I would advocate.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
A, a section like this, that's it.
I would, I, I would say what would be most useful is basically doing something similar. But for, to, I think that's what you're saying, but for Montessorino only to see where it connects to Los Gatos. There's, there's a lot of Los Gatos in there that we, you know, we can see, but I think we should focus on how we as Montessorino can get residents connected to, you know, what's, what's out there.
Yeah, I, I agree. We don't need to have all the, nearly as much square mile, many square miles, but it should be just, just Montessorino and the neighboring connections.
Which the map in the, in the presentation has that, except it misses out on some of the connections that you're showing here.
Yeah.
This one for sure.
Yeah, and, and that map is sort of a list of projects is the form of it.
Right.
Is one thing that I'm not crazy about.
But I think there's one that has a figure with the existing, like the existing pedestrian and existing bike.
Yeah, let me see if I can figure out how to get that.
Here, I was gonna share if you don't mind.
No, if you, if you've got it handy.
I see you guys are more techy than I am.
Well, I've, it's the first time I've ever actually shared. Bob probably does it all the time.
Okay. I'm not sure that, I think it's before that. Is that?
Before that?
What is this?
That's the, that's the bike one. This shows.
Can you go, can you go a little bit before that? I think it was before that because it, it talked about existing. Hold on, keep going, keep going. I think it was before. Thank you for doing that. Keep going.
There's stuff way back at the beginning that might be.
Not way at the beginning. I saw it with, okay, I could be wrong. Sorry.
Okay.
Okay. There was, it said existing. And it was a map and it, and it really showed, okay, wait, wait, that might be, what is that one? Is that?
This is bike.
Okay, existing bike. Okay, so and then there's another one that says existing pedestrian. So when you look at something like this, the existing network, you can kind of see that there's like, like big gaps, you know? And so this is what, what kind of struck me, this one and the pedestrian one.
Yeah, I think a couple.
Is it a little bit before that?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, existing pedestrians. So if you, if you look at that, this one shows a little bit more connection, I think, to Los Gatos and the other one. But I think those are ones that, that highlight where there are significant gaps. And, you know, we as a commission can, can kind of decide what do, what do we think are the most important gaps that we need to address? We kind of need something between this and what you just showed, Barry, you know, like
Exactly.
Something be kind of between those two, what's existing and, you know, what you just showed.
Mm-hmm. Although we want to show, I feel we want to show where we eventually want to be with, you know, being able to, you know, have a route walk through town or bike through town with it completely filled in.
No, I agree, but I think that we can focus on, this is more, this, this map here, like, I think it focuses more on Montessorino and kind of a little bit how to get to town rather than, you know.
Yeah, this is the right shape or the right square miles.
Right, I think we're the right proximity. Yeah, agreed.
That's, I do. Way of saying it.
Exactly, and I do think, yeah, showing the existing and then why we need these gaps filled is, is the most important piece of it. Oh, yeah.
But it seems like the, the way to show it is this, that with these, what we're looking at now, what the network should be.
Right.
And then what we need to do to get there.
Right, what stage or how many phases? Yeah.
And what we need to get there is mainly the stuff at the end that those consultants put together. How we get there, what we don't necessarily agree with, but.
True.
So I wonder if this, like this kind of map could, could be, you know, enhanced to, to show like where we hope to fill these, but not necessarily address exactly what would be done. Because I, I think some of the projects, you know, they, they might be ideas, but they might not be right for Montessorino. I mean, I mean, I'll, there are certain places where they, you know, want to use edge lane roads and I, I worry about that. I'm not sure how receptive the residents would be to something like that. I don't know if there are, are alternatives. Because there's probably more, more than one way of doing something. But I, but I think that's more getting down into the weeds of things, which I'm not sure that we need to do for this purpose. Is that correct?
I don't think we do. I don't think we can, even if we want to do.
Yeah.
We can't come up with specific plans. We need engineering and all sorts of stuff and community input. But one thing, one way we could handle it is put the, the section that the consultants did in the back and refer to it as examples or something like that, you know? Not, not something we're going to do, but possible ways to do it.
I, I think that's right because you, you wouldn't want people to think that that is exactly what we're going to do or that, just because something was identified by the consultant says short-term priority one, that that's actually can get done. I think it would be important, you know, acknowledge that there are, you know, gaps that need to be addressed for biking and, you know, as we go forward, we will, you know, kind of analyze them and figure what makes the most sense for the, for the, for the city at that time.
Mm-hmm, right. And also take advantage of opportunities, whether it be construction or repaving.
Exactly.
Okay. So specifically on the outcome. Does it make sense to, do you think it makes sense to have a map of this form factor? But have, show the proposed network that shows how everything connects and then follow it up with the examples to fill the gaps?
Yeah, I think we're on the right track there. I would say, you know, a set of overlays on this, you know, approximate map would probably be the way to go, the kind of overlay pedestrian overlay biking. And then, yeah, kind of show how it could work with the examples right after that. Makes the most sense.
Okay.
I wouldn't mind having two separate ones, like an overlay for the pedestrians and an overlay for the bikes. It just might be a little bit easier visually.
Yeah.
I think, I, yeah, I'd, I'd support that. Okay.
Is that something that we're going to have to ask Don? You know, or, or get a little bit more information on with respect to, is that something that he can do or is that something that we need the consultants to do?
Yeah, I, I think so. My gut feeling is Don won't be able to do it, but he might. Because I think he's struggling a little bit with the tech, but well, once he's back, we'll have to, I'll talk to him offline and figure out what the best way seems to be to do it.
Yeah. The consultant provided us with this. Does the city own the digital and electronic versions of this?
Great question.
I would certainly think so, but Don didn't know and he, he didn't, he wasn't able to find immediately editable document. I'm going to ask if there's a document we could go in and edit ourselves.
Yeah, I feel like, I, I feel like if they did this for us, we should be able to have access to the electronic files. I, I couldn't even begin to figure it like, I wouldn't know how to edit it, but I, I have to imagine that there might be somebody who could do that.
Yeah, yeah, we could, we could find someone, most likely a high school kid, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So they, we're still talking about the outcome, so anything, any other changes to the format of this document? I mean, there's a lot of filler in here, but I don't see any reason to get rid of it.
No, but I also think that, you know, the first like, I, I think, I think like the first 50 pages or 45 pages is basically looks, looks like a standard template. You know, it's basically just an information dump of terms and what things look like. I'd like to see it. What's the right word? I, I'd just like to see it, you know? I don't, what's the right word? You know, I just labeled as such, like, you know, this is just information. Because I, you know, it took me a while to figure out that I'm like, okay, this, this was not just written for Montessorino. After you get through 40 pages, you realize that's, that's a lot of information, but it's really just a template. And, you know, somebody who's interested can read it, but the stuff that really applies to Montessorino is in the back.
Mm-hmm. So I, I is, is really what you're talking about? Chapter four, where it says active transportation toolkit?
Um, no, I mean, like if, if you read, you know, there's just a lot of definitions and a lot of pictures, some of which are not at all remotely relevant.
Right.
Montessorino. And I think it, you know, you can get a little bit lost with all this stuff. You know, and, and I mean, you know, they're talking about, yeah, I mean, you're trying to go by the flares and the mobility and like, I, I was just, there's just a lot of stuff that.
Doesn't apply to us.
It really doesn't, exactly. It really doesn't apply to us and it, it, I, I, I just think it takes away from the, you know, what we're trying to do, you know? I mean, it's good information that they provided, but I think if we had more targeted information, which is specific to what we think that the, the city needs, it would probably parse down this report significantly. And it might be a little bit more, you know, easier to understand for people who care.
Okay, so would, the way to handle that would be for us to go through it, probably not now.
No.
And, and recommend things to hack out? Is that what you're thinking?
That, that might be an alternative if we don't have any more cycles left with the consultants. But I'd say before we start, you know, cutting, let's, let's see where we're on the contract. And then from there, we can kind of make decisions.
Or just make it clear that it, you know, the, the, the first two thirds of this is just, you know, background and information.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I mean, some of it, like, I don't know, the existing conditions section, I don't know how that, and there are survey results.
Oh, yeah.
So.
I mean, they're all intermingled is the hard part, like Doreen's saying, so it's like, do we keep this? Do we not keep this? Do we put it as backup for, you know, whatever?
Yeah.
There, there might even be a way, I mean, I think some of the information, they have a lot of information about Montessorino kind of in there with charts and graphs and stuff like that. But maybe there's even a way for us to just highlight the information that's really relevant. I don't know, but.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to get this down to a five to 10 page deck versus a 60 page. That's my thought at least.
Well, should we all try to take a look at it offline and figure out?
Yeah, I definitely think that's, I think that's something we should come to with the next meeting is, hey, you know, do we need to keep or keep or not? And then if we're keeping it, does it need to be modified? I guess would be the next question, right? So, and then we can kind of walk through pages one to 50 and do that. They said, but I think, you know, hearing from the contract and what Don can glean from, you know, Jessica's absence or what she left him note wise would help us understand, do we have any money left with the consultants? Do we do this ourselves? You know, because I think they did bring some good value add to some of these things, even though they kind of missed the boat on some other stuff, so.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we're out of money.
Okay, I figured that probably is the case. Since they haven't, since they haven't been calling to, you know, do any more work.
That they provided are really good, like a really good starting point. So I think that's super helpful.
Yeah, if we can get the digital version of it, it would make our job real easy, honestly.
Yeah.
Not that often, you know, punted over some of my children and asked them how to, how exactly do this.
Okay, so what we want to do to the document is trim it down so it's a lot leaner, leaner, simpler document. And I think you guys agreed, put in the, what the network, what we want the network to look like.
Correct.
And then very clearly like.
But not necessarily like put down what project, just that those areas need to be improved.
And then, and leave their projects in there, but very clearly label them as example ideas or something.
Examples of proposed, I go something like examples of proposed projects. You know, rather than just posed, because when you say proposed projects, people are going to think that that's. people are going to think that that's, you know, they're going to look at that, you know, short term one, short term two, long term one, long as and and take that as the Bible. And I don't think that that's what we would intend it to do. I think those are a list of projects, some of which we might very well agree with and some which we might not.
Yeah.
But I think it's us up to us as as a city to determine what's most important.
Yeah.
And since we have Steve here, I guess, Steve, is there anything that you would want or the council would want in his to help, you know, make decisions or understand better?
I like the approach that's being discussed so far. I think go back, each of you review it. I wouldn't worry so much about, you know, the money type of thing versus getting the product right. As far as paring down from sixty pages to ten pages are some of the discussion. And this is me not being in the craft, so to speak. I'm not sure if a lot of that stuff is in there because it has to be in there for federal and highway safety standards and all those type of things. But we'll we'll figure all that out. I would say continue the discussion. Um, we just have to decide if we're going to have another special meeting or just meet at the next regular Better Streets meeting uh when you come back with the information. And um we can take it from there. Continue the discussion then.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think it makes sense to have a special meeting, by the way, another one, because Shalini won't be back until just about the time of our next meeting.
Okay.
Will she be able to, you know, um, before the next meeting, take a look at this and provide some insights? I think the more people we have, the better it will be.
Yeah, I'll ask her to do that, although she did tell me she was gonna look at it and give me feedback before this meeting, written feedback. But it, I could imagine that it was overwhelming when you just look at it by itself.
Uh, yeah, exactly. No, I think if if you let her know that, you know, we'd like to just have some substantive input this December, right? Yeah.
And specifically, I'd say around the mapping and some of that stuff, so she gets, you know, doesn't get bogged down with the other thirty or forty pages.
You'd tell her to tell her to like, just, um, you know, glance over the first forty pages and focus on, you know.
Last time, yeah.
Yeah. Exactly.
Okay. All right, do we, then what's left, I think, is more on the specifics. Do we want to talk about any?
You mean in terms of the specific projects or?
Well, no, well, other, both the projects and there's like other text that that I'm not, that I would like changed, like, for example, one section one five, where they talk about the Los Gatos bicycle and pedestrian plan, they don't really acknowledge of the Montessorino input to that plan, which I think should have, should should at least be mentioned there. I mean, it's very minor, but
Okay.
I would like to see that, for exam- that's an example.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
And then there's uh the the figure two, three and two, four. He doesn't, I didn't see the source of that data.
What's two, three and two, four?
Their figures, a little bit.
Your two.
Let's page twenty, yeah.
This stuff here.
Yeah, I mean, just seems like for thoroughness, um that should say where this data came from.
Is this part of the survey or no? I can't remember.
I do not. My interpretation was no.
Okay.
It was not part of the survey.
Something I gleaned from the internet, maybe.
No, I actually think those were questions that were I think those were questions that were asked on the survey. You know, because it it asked whether you commuted to work or you worked from home and how long. So I, so I think that would be good to clarify. I think that that might have come from the survey.
Yeah, at least the Montessorino, yeah.
But um that's the information, the same data from the surveys on section three, figure three, four.
As well, okay.
So I think that's the I I just feel like that section we were looking at, he's got some just generic uh data from the state or something.
Purposes, yeah, okay.
Questions, there were questions about how often you walked and so I think it, um, yeah, it says walking purpose survey question, walking frequency survey question, so I I think that that was taken from the survey.
Yeah.
The chart that I that I referred to?
No, the one that that we're looking at right now.
Yeah, this stuff is from the survey. So the other stuff I don't think was from the survey, and I would just like to for them to label.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed.
That's a, that's a really good point, Barry.
And uh something else I think that we would benefit from doing is just walking ourselves through the uh the individual line items of feedback. And see if anybody has anything to comment on it. That's uh the desired active transportation improvements, which is page thirty six.
Yeah.
Oh, in the open ended comments?
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm just, I guess, think about it, make sure we're addressing all of these that seem reasonable.
Yep.
I agree.
So I guess that the only other thing that I have to talk about um is these projects, and I'm not even sure where we should, what we should do with them.
I I like your idea of labeling them examples of proposed um
Right.
projects. Because I think they do, they do probably, you know, point out deficiencies. Um, or, you know, as the consultants looked at it, they they were probably looking at what could you do to enhance this or make it more perfect for pedestrians and bikes, but um but it, but I just think we have to make it really clear that these are examples. I don't think we should lose these because I think it's a great tool. But we just need to make sure that people don't interpret it as, you know, we have or the the city has blessed these projects and this is what's going to happen.
So putting something across it in red diagonally?
Something like, you know, example only. You know.
Yeah, we could take it out of tabular format to do that, perhaps even, you know, in more written way, so people wouldn't blow them onto line one or line four or something like that.
Okay.
People are going to be going, okay, where on Winchester Boulevard are we going to put the twelve high visibility crosswalks? I I mean, like, you know, that's just um
Yeah.
That that, you know, I I just don't, I just think we have to make it really clear that um these are examples only.
Plus, Los Gatos is doing all the planning for Winchester.
Yeah.
Um, but but should we bother digging into these examples? Given that we know that, well, I I guess most of them, I don't think there's any data other than this chart, so we couldn't dig into it.
No, I think um, I mean, unless unless the city council wants us to do that, I I don't, you know. Eve, is that something that the council would want us to do at this point?
I can't imagine they would.
I can't even know how we would do it. I'm just not that good.
The answer is, I don't believe so.
Yeah.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, um well, in that case, um uh, does anybody have any other comments or suggestions?
No, I actually think if 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 we could find out whether we could get the electronic copy because um it might be, Bob had a good idea of trying to parse it down to, you know, you know, a small number of digestible pages. And I understand, maybe we have to have all that information in there for federal or state, or if you're doing grants or applying for something. But for purposes of just trying to, you know, um create our own master plan, you know, we could, we could have just pages that just work for us as a city and have this behind it or as backup. Just think if we're going to post something on the city website, we just don't want people to get overwhelmed if 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 we come up with a master plan. I don't, I don't know.
The the Los Gatos master plan, I think, is over an inch thick, by the way.
Oh, well, okay. So maybe, so maybe sixty pages isn't that bad?
Yeah. Probably. So but anyways, I'll I'll look into that. So I can tell you that Don is was till he was stricken with illness, was trying to talk to the consultant and figuring out whether we could get the document and whether um how 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 it would work if we tried to reengage with them to finish. So that's that's happening and I'll make, I'll continue to work with Don, and so we'll have answers to all those questions the next time we meet.
So is that is that something we could get the answer to before? I mean, would you be able to provide us that answer if you got that answer before our December meeting?
I'm not a hundred percent sure uh how to provide that information without violating the Brown Act.
Okay, okay.
I don't know. Steve, are you listening? Do you have any comment on that?
If you wanted to have like a and a subcommittee of the of the commission, like an ad hoc committee, two of you designated to go through things and take a deep dive and then report to the remaining members of the commission at the next meeting, that could be done.
Okay.
Yes, that's a good point, because then we don't have a quorum. You just can't have a quorum. That's why, like, I talked, I talked to you at length, um Doreen about some stuff and I didn't talk to Shalili or Bob, because it would have been a
Okay.
Brown Act violation.
Understand.
So if somebody wants to, I mean, I'm already talking to Bob, uh and so if somebody would wants to be involved in that and have a subcommittee.
You're already talking to Bob or talking to Don?
Don, I think.
Don, excuse me.
I was just trying.
Really?
Yeah.
I haven't had a conversation, Barry, so.
Yeah, so uh I got a little confused there.
That's okay.
Don doesn't count because he's deaf, so you both can talk to Don.
Yes, yes, yeah, Don, we can have two people less than a quorum. So if somebody else would like to be involved, that would be great.
Doreen, why don't you, if you're still passionate about it, go ahead. I'm going to take the ball and go a different route with just if we have to create this from scratch, I'm going to do some techie side, uh, deep diving into how we can use the maps that we have or up here, new ones.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. So I think we have a plan going forward. Anything else we should add or discuss?
Nope, I think that makes sense.
I think you have a pretty, pretty good um pretty good plan of attack going forward.
All right, well, thank you, Steve. And thank you for taking time to fill in.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Indeed, it's actually a pleasure. I got to do this once before a while back. Can't remember when that was, but this is always good in visiting on the commission. You do excellent work for the city. We appreciate all the time and thoughtfulness you put into these meetings. So keep the good work coming.
All right, well, yes, thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting then at seven fifty.
Okay, I don't know if anybody wanted to speak on, if there's any any public commenters that have surfaced since the discussion began in depth or.
Oh, yeah. We've already gone past that invitation, that that uh
Nobody was on.
Part of the agenda, but if somebody wants to comment now, I'm happy to take it.
One has logged in. Let me just let you know, nobody's logged and I haven't seen any raised hands and up until now, I haven't seen anything. So you guys are big good.
Okay, all right, Steve, thank you for double checking that.
All right.
Okay, seven fifty one meeting is adj- adjourned, and I'll be in touch with you on our subcommittee, Doreen.
Sounds good. Thanks, Barry.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Bye, Bob.
Bye bye.
Bye, guys.
Have a good night.